Here to share with you some amazing accomplishments of our students, staff, and our parent advisory committee. When the school year began, I quickly learned and recognized the importance of building community and a sense of belonging at Jefferson. Throughout the school year with the support of our parent advisory committee, we've been able to build community by bringing parents, teachers, and students together. So I'm going to draw your attention to the presentation. So these are some of the things that we did at Jefferson this year. We hosted a unity day for our students where we talked about the importance of belonging and accepting others regardless of their differences. We hosted a Halloween carnival where we had parents come in and run stations in our gym of different carnival games, and then they also had stations of trick-or-treating actually in this room here. Also, our kindness fair. The kids created different things for people, including the breathing sticks that are at your tables there. So those were made by Jefferson students. We hosted a blood drive in honor of one of our students, Maya, and a toy drive, and the toys were delivered by myself and her mom to Lori's Children's Hospital in Chicago. And then we danced the night away with Jim Gill, which was very fun and exciting. And lastly, one of our biggest events was our fundraiser, For the Love of Jefferson, where we raised $15,000. And we have been able to purchase equipment and materials to upgrade our sensory room, our gross motor room, and then we'll be adding some outdoor equipment to our courtyard. So these are some of the items that we purchased. And then can you switch it to the other? Before I move on, though, I want to ask members of our parent advisory committee to stand if you're here tonight. It's a little weird because... So I'm extremely grateful and for the unwavering dedication and invaluable support this group has provided. Thank you for dedicating your time and energy to Jefferson. Your willingness to volunteer reflects your genuine concern for the well-being and success of our community. I'm truly fortunate to have met and worked with you all this school year. So thank you. And then if you turn your attention to the screen again, building a sense of belonging among the students at Jefferson this year was accomplished through Butterfly Buddy, our positive behavior recognition program. Each week, teachers nominate a student for being a fabulous friend, a helping hand, and a wonderful worker. I then get the pleasure to go into each classroom and present the student with their award, take their picture, and they also get a sticker, and they are featured in our monthly family newsletter. All of our butterfly buddies, could you please come up? a fabulous friend, a helping hand, and a wonderful worker. Good job, you guys.
Yeah.
You guys want to get a picture? Can you guys face that way? Turn around, face that way. Let's move over, guys. Let's move over. Come here, Jeff. Do you want to go be in the picture?
We can keep this on while I do my superintendent reports so all the kids can see their faces.
Thank you. Thanks again, students. Thanks again, parents, for supporting them. I'm using my breathing stick. Let's move to public comments while our room is... while people are exiting. All right, so this is the point in the meeting where we welcome public comments. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools, but we ask that you refrain from making comments concerning individual students or staff members. The board uses this time to listen to community questions and concerns but will not respond immediately to requests for information. Additionally, the board cannot take formal action on non-agenda items. Contact the board president by email if you wish to discuss your topic further. Please come to the microphone and state your name and, if comfortable, your address for the minutes. So, do we have any public comments? Okay. All right, thank you. We just changed our order a little bit, and so we're going to go back to student and staff recognition, educator appreciation week. I can just share, I've been going around to all the schools this year, and I've seen so many teachers function in their rooms, how organized they are, how they have the students, the rapport that they have, the caring. It's just been really remarkable to see them in action, and so really appreciate what the educators in our district do. So I'm going to turn it over to Ben.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. I think with all the different categories of people that we have in our schools, custodians, teachers, social workers, psychologists, librarians, teaching assistants, nurses, administrative assistants, there's just so many people that it takes to make sure that we can have wonderful environments for our students. And so we just want to say our appreciation for them. It is officially May 6th to May 10th, and I always tell parents, you know, when they ask me, "What's the best thing I can do?", and I say honestly, like, a heartfelt note to a staff member just goes a long way. I have all of the notes a parent has ever written to me still there on my desk. I read them at... I have like a process that I do at the very beginning of school year, I read all of them, and it just brings joy, and I know that every other teacher, you know, they keep those things like they're trophies. So if you're a parent and you're listening to this, any note that you can write to one of our staff members, they also appreciate Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, those types of things, anything with caffeine generally. It's a pretty easy workforce to shop for, so... But just the amazing talents that they have and the dedication is truly remarkable. So I just want to say thank you for all the things that they do. And I'll just kind of move right through into my update. We also have had community engagement sessions talking about our facilities plan. Right now, we're looking at between 13 and 15 presentations that we'll be doing this month and in May. And so far, they've gone really well. In particular, we had the PT3 meeting in this room on Tuesday and presented our facilities plan and how that ties together with our Student Services Action Plan, which we're going to hear more about in May here at the board meeting, but I think it was just a real nice synergy of all of the work and plan that we've done. So in case anybody wants more information, they can reach out to me at any point and be happy to meet with them, talk to them. I'll meet you anywhere, anytime, anyplace. And then we also want to recognize our music educators because we were awarded, again, for the back-to-back years, the Best Communities in Education, and they do a great job with our band, choir, and orchestra students and our general music programs. Again, those people work very tirelessly. They're often some of the last people to leave a building at night after a concert, but sometimes the first people to arrive at the school as they're welcoming students into their ensemble classrooms. So we just want to say thank you to the dedication that our music teachers have. On May 21st, everybody is invited to our retirees' celebration.
In the agenda later this evening is the transportation contract discussion. Really, I'll keep this brief because we'll talk about it later, but this is the regular bus contract, because we have two. We have also a special education bus contract that went out to bid due to a new law that required us to go out to bid, and we've got the results of that back. And we can go through, in the packet, there's per route costs, but also Adam will share with us later the actual overall costs and potential savings that we'll see from going out to bid on that. So that was good. Then the most extensive discussion we had was the Lincoln Phase 1 discussion. We went through in detail the floor plans for each of the floors and the timing of the work. You know, a lot of it is really has this domino effect, and we talked about some potential options that Ben's going to explore with Adam about maybe, you know, doing something in the year that around the administrators' offices as well that would keep things moving and actually try to accelerate a little bit. But really, this construction for Phase 1 will take place from this summer throughout the year, next year, and into next summer. We also talked about, you know, the safety and the, you know, the communication of that safety as well, plan, not only, you know, with students being there from summer school and also in the school year, how we're going to, you know, manage that safety and maybe communicate that to the broader parent base during the year. And what you'll see on this evening's agenda later, and I know we're moving that up, is the first contract with Midwest Mechanical for that Phase 1 construction for about, I think it's about 1.6 million. We'll talk about that later, and I think that's going to be moved up to our first agenda item. And then finally was the field attic discussion. So I think a parent had raised that there was that open attic space in field, and rather than building an extension on top of the kindergarten classes that we were looking at as part of the Phase 2 of the overall project with the referendum. We, the administration, have been exploring with our architect, George White, George from White, about the use in that empty attic space in field. Basically, the cost came back as, you know, it was actually more expensive with less square footage, and there was an uncertainty about whether the foundation of the main building could support that as well. So that could even be even a more additional cost on top of the initial estimate. So I think it's safe to say that we can put that one aside, that we've explored it, and that we'd most probably be looking as part of the referendum package to build on top of the kindergarten classrooms that we added a couple of years ago in field. And that was it.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds like it was a productive conversation. A lot was covered.
Yeah.
All right, let's move to education. Rachel?
Great. So our main focus at the Education Committee today was hearing about the ELA curriculum adoption that's going to come to the board tonight for a vote. So I'm really grateful to Samantha and her team and the teachers that were here today to walk us through that. Was very impressed by the amount of work that went into this, both pre-work and planning and learning, collaboration among other area districts and districts out of state as well, and really making sure that this adoption is based on research and data in terms of helping kids improve their reading and writing skills. So we're going to get to hear, I don't want to do too many details because Samantha's going to do it much better than me when she talks about it and our staff here tonight. So just going to be looking and hearing about a K-5 adoption, and also a 6-8, and how that might look a little bit for K2 versus 3.5 and 6.8 with that implementation. Also, we spent, you know, quite a bit of time on that. So our second focus was to hear a little bit from Alicia on the Student Services Action Plan update, and also about some subspecialized programs. And some of this we've already discussed and approved with Phase 1 at Lincoln, with making sure that the SEL programming and the SLC program will continue, will start for social-emotional learning and then SLC, but also looking at other specialized programs that serve some of our students with diverse learning needs in the district and how we can grow that for our learners. So that'll come more, and I think we didn't really have as much time to discuss. So Monica and I were talking with Alicia about possibly continuing that committee meeting and meeting again in May so that we can spend the time on that that it deserves. So anything to add, Monica? Or any questions?
Okay, really important work as well. Thank you. Thanks to the Education Committee. All right, that's great. All right, as Gareth said, we are going to, since we have representatives here from Midwest Mechanical, we're going to move our agenda item up so that we can get this. So we're going to move A7 up at this point, and so if Midwest Mechanical wants to, or Adam will give a quick...
So yeah, just reiterating some of the comments from Gareth and what happened. We discussed in detail the, you know, Phase 1A, as we're calling it, which essentially is all the work that's going to come into play for 2024. In addition, we want to get as much work as we possibly can this summer, but along with that comes a lot of the design work for, you know, the next 14 months and some prepurchases of some mechanical equipment. The entire contract is in the packet with some detailed drawings, and the contract is 1.67 million, and, you know, we're looking forward to move forward with this action item.
Can we just add this, guaranteed contract?
Guaranteed price with no change orders.
Thanks, Phyllis. Okay. All right, why don't we take the motion, and then we can see if there's any discussion.
I move that the Board of Education at Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge Niles, Illinois, approved the contract with Midwest Mechanical Group LLC in the amount of $1,677,864 for demolition, prepurchasing of mechanical equipment, and associated construction work for Lincoln Phase 1A.
Second.
All right, Monica, the motion. Gareth had the second. Hub with discussion from the board. All right, since once again this was discussed at the committee level, let us roll call.
Milligan.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Lubinski.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
George Jakus.
Yes.
Double yes, and two of you sitting here.
Okay. Yes. Motion carries Midwest Mechanical representatives. Thanks for joining us for the committee meeting and the board meeting. We appreciate your collaboration. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and since we also have guests in the audience, next on our agenda is the ELA curriculum. So Samantha's going to come up, and she brought some District 64 staff with her.
We'll just all gather around the table and say...
And we want to welcome Samantha back from maternity leave. We're glad you're back with us.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for having us tonight. With me, I have Megan Kiefer, who's our K5 ELA curriculum specialist in the district. This is Lindsay Harrington, who is our grade 6 through 8 ELA department chairperson. We have Kathleen McCarthy, who is a 6th grade special education resource teacher at Emerson, and Ursula Cosentino, who is a 6th grade ELA teacher at Lincoln and our department liaison for middle school. So we're excited to be here tonight to talk to you about our curriculum review in the area of ELA for grades K through 8. As I'm sure you can imagine, this is a lengthy process and a really big endeavor for our district, and it spans across all of our schools for all of our kids. To root ourselves in this work, we always think about our strategic plan and what that tells us and what our goals are. We think about what a sound curriculum review is and what it means for District 64. And finally, we think about what our standards are. And we talked in our ed committee about how we could buy a million-dollar project, but at the end of the day, the standards are guiding all of our work, especially in ELA. Within our curriculum review, there's three things that we had to do because it's really important for this endeavor. One is the professional learning. We have to take a deep dive into our standards to understand what those priority standards are and what we need to be teaching students at grades K through 8. Next, there's a program analysis. We need to do a rigorous review of the programs that are out there for us to be looking at so that we can make good, sound decisions about them. And then finally, we have to take those programs that are rigorous enough for our district and do that lesson or unit sampling, that piloting, which is what we did this school So our timeline, this work really started last year with Lori Lopez and some of the people sitting at this table and more who are not even in this room, but it continued through the summer as well. One piece was really vetting those programs that are out there and available to us, and the second is doing professional learning for our committee of staff, including teachers and other support staff that you see in our buildings, such as coaches, library information specialists, special education teachers, curriculum specialists. So we rooted ourself in that work. Next, in the fall is when our committee really came together and we started thinking about our committee work. What are our goals and our vision? What are research and best practices that we need? What evaluation tool are we going to use to really think about these programs? And then finally, we had to really begin those vendor presentations to see what's out there and whittle them down. Are we good? Okay? Okay. That work continued throughout the winter and the fall where our committee really started meeting. Like I spoke about, we did those presentations, created a really sound or adopted a sound evaluation tool, began piloting programs, and then from there, we did feedback and evaluation with our teachers, but also with our parents and our students, which is something we really haven't done in District 64 before, but getting feedback of those who are really receiving on the other end. And then finally, it was important for us sitting at this table to do site visits and collaborate with neighboring districts who have adopted programs we're looking at or have gone maybe a different way and see what's working and what's not for them. And then finally, in the spring, and right now, we've continued to do pilots, receiving that feedback and evaluation, and now we come to you for an adoption so that we can start some of that professional development and planning for this summer and for the I talked a little bit about our learning. That was really important for us to understand what we need, and in order to ensure that we were all on the same page, we had to ground ourselves in a summer course and an evaluation tool, and then finally, in the Illinois Literacy Plan, which came out about...
January.
January, so just a few months ago. And that's a really lengthy document, but it supports everything that we value, and as we shared in the ed committee, we feel really good about our decision because everything we're doing and what we want to adopt is in that Illinois Literacy Plan. So we had to talk about that, but then we also brought it to the entire K5 and 6.8 staff yesterday in professional development. So we're starting to kind of grab people and bring them into this ELA committee work. During our time together, we created goal statements, and you can see many, excuse me, similar themes in here, right? We want a comprehensive ELA program, something that's going to integrate all of those skills together, but we also want something that's going to be engaging, inclusive, and rigorous for our students. That scaffold instruction for our entire continuum of services and students is really important to us. So we come tonight to talk about our resource or our program recommendation. For grades K2 and really 3.5, we feel so good about adopting Amplify CKLA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. And finally, for grades 6 through 8, we're so excited to adopt HMH Inteliterature, which also includes our 5th grade Channels of Challenge ELA students. So just to kind of fill you in a little bit, all of our CFC students in our Gifted and Talented Program will adopt the grade level above for grades 3 through 8. We'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. You'll notice up here that the dates for grades 3 through 5 are not next school year but the school year after, and I have a few slides to talk about that. As we went through this pilot and the whole curriculum review process, we found that there were some snafus or some difficulties with our current structure and our current scheduling. So what we did was pilot ways to work them out, and then we did subcommittee work and found out that it's not good for kids, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a second, so stay with me. To begin, we really want to tell you why these programs are great for our students.
In K5, as you said, we're moving towards Amplify CKLA, and one of the first reasons is it is directly aligned to our state standards, and we found that the activities and the texts are not just rigorous, which is also listed on there, to hit those standards at each grade level, but also in many cases, aim above grade level. So there's opportunities to stretch our students' learning. Another really important piece, as you saw in our goal statement for K5, was the integration of standards and strands. In the K5 world, teachers are really responsible for being experts of every content, and that can become very challenging to decide when and how to layer systematically all the pieces together, and CKLA really did that and integrated all the ELA strands from reading, writing, language development, speaking, and listening. So we're excited, we're very excited about that piece. And then the last bullet point up there, you'll see there's current research on knowledge building, or many people are familiar with the catchphrase of the science of reading, and to many people that means phonics and decoding, but the other big piece that's come out of the research is the knowledge building, which we'll talk about a little bit more. As I mentioned, the science of reading, you've probably, being an educational leader, heard that term many times. This up here, you see Scarborough's rope, which is a visual representation of all the different strands that have to be woven together to really create skilled reading, and there's a similar one for skilled writing as well. But the thing I want to point out on here is, at the start, you see... So we've done work in our district around that word recognition strand, especially in K1 before we started this official review process, but the other piece that became a big part of our learning was that language comprehension, and that's where the background knowledge comes in. And what we've learned is that without background knowledge and explicit vocabulary instruction, there really isn't comprehension. So trying to figure out how to balance all those pieces together to boost student comprehension, it really is like this illustrates a weave together of many skills. Okay. As we said, this knowledge building piece is really, it's Core Knowledge Language Arts. It's at the basis of how the program was designed. So you can see on the top right, students grow from week to week within their school year, like in kindergarten, you see three different units, but building the knowledge across the year. And then in the other two, you see how from year to year, those ideas continue to grow. There are three threads of learning that connect the units from kindergarten through 5th grade. You'll see in green, the literature strands, in purple, the science strands, and in blue, if my eyes serve me right, are the history strands. So you'll see knowledge building, not just across the year, it's across the scope of the kindergarten through 5th grade experience. And building all that knowledge for all our students helps them to continue to work on their comprehension skills.
And this is really important for us to think about for that alignment to grades 6 through 8 from K5, right? We want students to have a sound core background of this knowledge that when they get to middle school, where they're in ELA, social studies, and science, where that larger chunk, they have a good foundation, right?
Another piece we really looked at through our review is the scaffolds and supports for all learners, and what CKLA brought us, as I mentioned, was a really tight, explicit core, giving all students access to core vocabulary and an assessment system from daily checks and formative assessments to mid-unit checks and end-of-unit assessments, as well as benchmarks, so that teachers have the data and the information they need embedded within their curriculum to know what students may need more time with or not. And then the two other things you see on this slide are the supports in the sidebars for all teachers to reference, what ideas for supporting or scaffolding towards student learning. The hand raised up there in the corner is specific to our multilingual learners, however many times there are sentence frames or question strategies that all students could benefit from.
So for grades 6 through 8, we are really excited about HMH Into Literature. We had 100% of the teachers vote for this or choose it, so that was really exciting, and I'm so pleased with the work of the committee, and thank you to these ladies too for coming to support me, also for each other. We are, again, of course, are aligning our work to our standards and the integration of skills at the middle school level in terms of reading, writing, speaking, listening, and grammar is also woven into HMH Literature, so we're excited about that, who isn't? Everyone loves grammar. We are also excited about the rigorous and engaging texts that are offered by the program. Students were really excited to read a variety of informational texts, narratives, poetry. There are podcasts offered, so there's a lot of opportunity for students to engage with texts in different ways. There are a lot of challenging performance tasks offered by the program, which is really exciting too, because for middle school teachers, we know that we like the structure, but we also value choice, and our students really value choice, and there is a lot of choice that's embedded in the program, as you can kind of see if you look at, that's an example of our student workbook for the unit. There is explicit skill instruction, which I think our committee felt pretty strongly was really important. And one of the things that we were really excited about was the validation that the program offers Notice and Note, which is a program we've been using for years. The high school in Main South was using that as well, so we were excited to see that embedded in the program already. So that's something that we as teachers can already build on and use that and continue to grow with that for our students. As a teacher, I found the program to be very user-friendly. There is so much available within the program, and we're still kind of uncovering that, and we will be for a while, but it was, managing the workflow was really, I wouldn't say easy, but it was acceptable and fun in a way, but I think that's when, as teachers, if we can work with the program, then of course the students will be able to also... We were super excited too about the differentiation possibilities and the scaffolded learning. You could see how things built on each other throughout the entire program. You could see there were students, I have three students who are newcomers. In one of my classes, I was able to give them work that was helpful or accessible for them right away. Students across the learning continuum were able to access the different programs because of things that are embedded in the HMH program, so we were excited about that, so thank you.
So, one of the key elements of HMH, which I love, was the flexible grouping options based on our data and skill standards, meaning that there are opportunities for students to engage with text at their reading level. So we had students in varying groups, and it was, they were very strategically placed based on their needs. There's many features to the program such as audio texts, glossaries in TED languages. There's visual text, if you can see up there, there's an anchor chart, so for students that require pre-teaching, visuals can help front-load the vocabulary, and when they are in class, they can use the visual to reference and participate in discussions and have, feel successful. They also offer coaching videos, which, the videos are done by peers, so they're seeing themselves and learning from each other. There are so many features of this program that made all students feel successful.
And then finally, because we talk about that continuum of programming, for our Gifted and Talented students in CFC, this resource is actually developed all the way to grade 12, but we'll be using it to grade 9, and this, at least in the view of our CFC teachers, was rigor enough for them, but also offered that differentiation and scaffolding based on those different skill integrations of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. There's also the flexibility where they can incorporate those novel studies or literature circles that are important to them, and that builds some of those skills into there. And then finally, you may have noticed this or not, every unit is built on an essential question. So for our middle school students, but specifically our CFC students, there's a thematic approach where they can really dive deep into that, and some of that includes research then. And just talking a little bit more about alignment, we've been really lucky to have a good collaboration with District 207. I've been able to talk to their Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning about this adoption, and what we've been doing now is sharing pacing guides and scope and sequence for grade 9 so that we can understand what our students are doing and then what their students are doing. So we're gonna continue that planning, which is really cool. One thing to think about, we talked a lot about the evidence-based learning that's in here, right? The note-taking, the strategic reading, that integrated approach, those diverse in text complexity. But another piece is that HMH Into Literature offers or mirrors assessment questions very similar to IAR and MAP testing. They've recently acquired MAP under their company umbrella, and their platform is starting to roll out some of those test-type questions that we can learn from to understand more of our student deficits in that area. So while we never want to teach to a test, we want students to become more comfortable taking those tests when it comes time to it. And finally, it's always really important for us to understand what our neighboring districts are doing to learn, but also to collaborate with them. So under our K5 column for Amplify CKLA, Megan and I have, and actually Lindsay and Helen, who's in the audience, have had a really nice opportunity to collaborate with Lake Forest School District 67, District 31 West Norfield, and Libertyville School District 70. Lake Forest actually invited us to their school district for their institute day, and we spent about a half a day learning from them because they're in year one of an adoption for Amplify CKLA. So a lot of districts around us, 34, 25, Glenview and Arlington Heights, are currently under curriculum review, or everyone else is in year one or year two of adoption, and this is under the Illinois Literacy Plan, everything that's starting to come out about new research. And then finally, for HMH Into Literature, we were able to do the same thing, but Lindsay and I were able to also tour schools and sit in classrooms of other programs that we were considering within this curriculum review. So tonight, we're also here to talk to the board about what this adoption will mean for our district. So for Amplify CKLA for grades K through 2, we are asking for the board to approve about $330,000 to cover a six-year subscription, which includes teacher print editions, activity books, and student readers, in addition to professional learning, which will obviously be very important as we start to onboard the rest of our teaching staff in addition to those who piloted, which would take place during our institute days, our summer, and then our early release days on Wednesdays. One thing to note, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, some of this will be supported in part by our title grant funding from this year and next year. For HMH Into Literature, we're asking for the board to approve about $439,000 for that same six-year rollout, including those consumable texts, the teacher print materials, digital licensing, and then a program that's called Writeable, that's actually included within this content. And then very similarly, our professional development that will have to happen for all of our 6 through 8 ELA teachers and those who support. So just to give a little bit more insight about what an adoption like this means, because we're kind of hodgepodgeing quite a few things together currently under that K2 umbrella, we're actually able to offset cost a little bit per year by getting rid of some of those other programs. And then as I mentioned in the other slide, we're very fortunate to receive some title grant funding that we will also apply to this budget this year and next year. Obviously, funds have not been released yet for next year's grant funding, but we assume those will be coming in, and part of that would be afforded to this adoption as well. One thing that you'll also notice up here is the last bullet, is that for our adoption for Into Literature, we plan on using this year's budget to offset that cost because we've come in under, but for our Amplify CKLA adoption, that would go under our 24-25 budget, and then our 3 through 5 adoption, which would come next year, would be for the year after. So, while we want to roll both out, there's three different years of budgets that we would be using. Now for Amplify CKLA for grades 3 through 5, we would not be moving to a full adoption for next school year, but for the 25-26 school year. And while that adoption would actually happen next year, I wanted to start talking to the board about that and what the reasoning is behind not adopting for 3 through 5 next year. So eventually, we would be coming to you to talk about this adoption, which would include five years as opposed to six, because it would be one year of a late start, but we found that we've had some challenges, and we did know about these early on and did a lot of problem-solving and piloting of programs and schedules with teachers and principals and building schedules and students. And then in very early spring, we started subcommittee work, where we brought the teachers together who did that, and Megan and I found that the teachers reported back to us, it's just not good for kids. It might work in theory, but it's not working. So I'll talk about what those challenges are. The first one is our master building schedules. Currently, right now, we don't have an integrated approach for reading and writing. We have a reading block and we have a writing block that are at very separate times. With new research and the goals that we have for our district, we want a comprehensive ELA block or an ELA program where that is all woven together, so that structure has to change a little bit, which is not a challenge for everyone, but we find challenges for our Channels of Challenge program and also our special education students. So if you're a 4th grade CFC student, right now, you leave your classroom for about 60 minutes and you go to your CFC classroom for reading, and then when it's over, you return to your classroom for 30 to 40 minutes for writing, so they're very separate. With pretty much every program that we could have adopted, they're integrated now, so we come into a little bit of an issue. So part of our piloting was teachers really staying lockstep with one another, but it's very hard for seven teachers in a building to stay lockstep. I don't know if anyone's a former teacher, Denise, Monica, Rachel, you understand, it would be very hard for seven people to do the exact same thing every single day, and then you throw CFC students into the mix as well. Another thing that we tried was having students reading things outside of school, reading things during their X-block, which is their intervention, but again, not what's best for kids because those students need that intervention, that X-block time for other things that they're working on as well. And finally, for our special education students, currently, a special education teacher will go into a reading block for, let's say, 60 minutes and support students for a reading goal they have. When we have an integrated approach like this, we can't just throw a special education teacher into a room and then have them leave in the middle of class, so to speak. So we have to work some of that out, and part of our collaboration with other districts was understanding what they did, and it's all over the board. One district I talked to is just very flexible with their sped staff, and they go in for 45 minutes and then they leave, and they just kind of hope it works. And then some districts have reorganized their sped programming where students are getting maybe more minutes because that block is now longer. So we don't know where we are on that spectrum right now, hopefully probably somewhere in the middle of it, but that's our sped programming, and our philosophy as a district that has to change. So some of those solutions that we're already working on this school year is staffing FTE, and as we talked about with Monica and Rachel, this isn't gonna mean 20 or 30 staff members, right? We're talking about a handful possibly, but that's something Alicia, the principals, and special education coordinators and I are currently working on right now with Ben and Joel. Another thing that we have to think about is revising our building schedules for the elementary schools because we have that integration right now. So are we gonna block those ELA classes for 90 minutes? They maybe could still be 60 and 30, and we just continue learning at another time, but that's another piece to the puzzle. And then finally, like I said, that sped programming, and it's not just the staffing, but it's our philosophy as a district of how we're writing IEPs and how minutes and what our service delivery model is. I know that might be a little confusing, so I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And please know, we've been problem-solving that this year, but everything that comes to the table, outside of adding FTE and just putting a band-aid on it, is just not good for kids right now. So we need another year to do a little bit more of that planning. We feel good about that for two different reasons. We don't want to rush anything, maybe three. I don't want to rush anything, and our teachers don't want to rush anything, and an ELA adoption is something that has to be good, right? It affects everyone and everything that we do. The second piece is that we can continue doing piloting at grades 3 through 5, and that's something that we're currently exploring. So not everyone may be doing this next year, but some teachers will continue that. And then finally, we can do this as a roll-up, right? We start with K2, and then it's gonna move into 3-5. So, well, I would love to say we have a K8 adoption and we're so excited about it, we just don't have it all for next year, but we will. We're not shopping around, it's just gonna be a long engagement until that final year Finally, I really want to say thank you to all of these teachers, if anyone's listening or please tell them if you see them or meet them eventually. There are a lot of people who were part of this, and it involves leaving your classroom and writing sub-plans, and just being present and doing the work. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into this, and it's not just our classroom teachers, but it's also those who work in support staff capacities, curriculum specialists, library information specialists, our coaches, our multilingual teachers. It was really all hands on deck for this, and same with our 6-8 committee review, so from the bottom of my heart, I thank them. But very specifically, thank you to Megan and Lindsay and Ursi, who did a lot of this work before the committee even began meeting, and some of it just out of the kindness of their heart because they're really great people who are passionate about ELA. Kathleen, you're fabulous too. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? I know this was talked about during the committee meeting. You know, I am just curious, do we typically do a six-year adoption?
Yes, five or six years.
Questions? I know this was talked about during the committee meeting. You know, I am just curious, do we typically do a six-year adoption?
Yes, five or six years. Any other questions?
So does that mean that grades three through five are going to continue to use units of study next year?
They will, yes, at some capacity. Like I said, we'll have some teachers who will bring some of this into their classroom and that'll help us do some more learning and solve some of those problems. But yes, we would continue with our current structure.
And is there a cost to that? Because I don't know what our original unit of study subscription was. Was it like a five-year, six-year thing as it run out?
So Megan can speak a little bit more to that, but for that units of study, no, not specifically. But other programs that we use simultaneously.
Yeah, with units of study itself, there wasn't an annual adoption or even a six-year adoption. It was just an upfront cost that's already been absorbed. There are a few supplemental materials that will continue because we have been sort of creating a puzzle of ELA materials that will continue. And they were on that first slide, what we are getting rid of at K2, we will continue at 35.
Do you want me to go back? Do you want to see those up again?
Yeah, those, yeah.
So you can see some classroom library money, being a writer skills book, that's like grammar mechanics, and some handwriting, those are the K2 numbers. So in 35, some of those costs will continue.
But these are the costs for K2.
Okay, so it's okay. And then, I guess, units of study, right, run into a lot of criticism that it's not research-based or I think maybe research since it's been adopted here has not been great and has been kind of debunked some of the things behind it. Just so that the board can feel comfortable, can you give us some comfort that Amplify, you know, I think you talked about the science of reading, but that's grounded in real research and that we should feel comfortable that we're not going to hear things like that with the adoption of this curriculum?
Yes, so we feel very comfortable in that. And I think the one backbone is the Illinois Literacy Plan. That's really rooted in even more research than we've even encountered through this curriculum adoption. And the Illinois Literacy Plan wasn't finally adopted until January, but everything that we were doing and everything that we were piloting is in there. So when you take a look at Amplify CKLA, every component of it is in the Illinois Literacy Plan. When you look at into literature, every component of it is in there. And if the board is up at night tonight, I can send you the Illinois Literacy Plan and highlight the really amazing parts. But for every competency piece, that's on one of our slides, I believe there's nine of them, it tells you what are the should-dos and the things you shouldn't have. And both of these programs are all under the should-dos. It's a very interesting plan and policy under ISB, but we're spot on with what it's telling us we should do.
So I guess linking the first question and the second question together, knowing that, even knowing units of study is kind of that not great. You've got this other thing that isn't great with your timetable. You think the lesser of the two evils right now is to continue with units of study versus having a more rigorous curriculum because of those other challenges that you mentioned. That's kind of the overwhelming feeling of the administration and teachers?
So I think rushing something that is not going to help the most students would be detrimental to our district right now because of those challenges. They're difficult to sort through and then kind of figure out in the moment. So we don't want to kind of, you know, build the plane while we're flying, so to speak. I know the one thing, like you said, that's been under criticism is the reading and writing workshop, right? That's kind of that philosophy that you're talking about. And I think we use units of study, but there's pieces of it that we're beginning to supplement. So some of that is kind of, I don't want to call it fading away, but it's taking a backseat to some of those other programs.
The other thing that I would say is, research shows that whenever you do curriculum adoption, especially of really rigorous materials, which this, both of these would be, it's like incredibly difficult work. And you want teachers to have an amazing experience from the very beginning. And if they don't, like all of us, right, you start to kind of lean away from fidelity of implementation and start to supplement with things that you're more comfortable with or things that you've done in the past. And so I would say, not just in District 64, but like across the board, whatever, what I would recommend to folks is to really figure out how you have the best first-year experience possible because that's going to set you up for the remainder of the five years or the six years that you're doing adoption versus having a really rocky start and then you're kind of at a deficit trying to recoup like investment and excitement and just foundational understanding. And so if I think about it, not just in terms of next year, but in terms of the next five to six years and how do we set up our teachers and students best for really the highest fidelity implementation, it would be setting them up for the best possible first year possible.
But a lot of what you just said at the beginning was related to the teacher's experience. I personally want to put the child's experience first. And I think that is what I'm getting at with my question is, are we doing the right thing by the children who have already kind of suffered through this units of study and having to be supplemented if we're putting this off right here? That's kind of my concern.
I could speak a little to reassure you on this decision specifically for third through fifth grade. Much of the talk and it's really PR around units of study, the criticisms, if you will, have come in that K2 band because of the lack of phonics and decoding instruction. And fortunately, in District 64, we never only used units of study. We always had phonics program too. And as more research was becoming available, we even went to foundations. This is our third year of implementation. So we've tightened up the biggest problems already, and that's in the K2 world. As well as in 64, we've always valued professional development. So even in three through five, we've done learning around decoding and strategies for upper-grade readers and how to tighten up their instruction with supplemental materials. And that's where some of the cost will continue because we've had supplements to our units of study programming. If you picture back to that Scarborough's rope, that top frame of language comprehension is still fairly strong in units of study as students do read. They get more choice, I will say, in a workshop environment. But again, we've been doing professional development and using other readings to create some more shared experiences with like our story work subscriptions and some close reading passages that we've invested in so that our students are really getting a, I will say comprehensive, but it's very different than what we're looking to in the future where it is designed from the start. That way, we've done that work through professional development and educating our staff to do those things as a team and for our students.
And just so the board knows, when our committee met, or subcommittees met in the spring to talk about these problems and what the solutions are based off of our piloting, the overwhelming response from teachers was that it wasn't good for kids. So I don't know if I wasn't clear on that, but our students having to read during their X Block or catch up on work or a teacher having to stay lockstep sounds like a teacher problem, but it becomes a problem for our kids when they can't move or do what's best for their class because they all have to stay. So if Megan has Matt, Phyllis, and Denise, and I have Ben, Gareth, and Monica, and I know that you three need to work on writing for one more day, I can't because Megan's ready to rock and roll. So it's more about that differentiation piece that kind of stops us because of that scheduling and the way our structure currently is.
Thank you for the reassurance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and to oversimplify a little bit, I don't see how you can have a positive student experience without a positive teacher experience. They're the ones delivering the curriculum in the first place. So if they're not, you know, if they don't have a good experience learning how to implement it and to, you know, present it to the students and the students are not going to have one. So you've got to have, I mean, you've got to start with the folks that, you know, are ultimately delivering to the students in the first place.
We're really excited about this adoption, truthfully. We feel really good about our decision.
Have it as part of a 75-minute presentation to your subcommittee.
Just gushing about it.
Yeah, no, I, again, just want to thank you guys for all of your work. It was so thorough and I appreciate the thoughtfulness in terms of how we roll it out because I have seen, as Monica talked about, just the difference in how different curriculums are rolled out and then how we follow them with fidelity or how we don't and then how that does really ultimately impact the learning of our kiddos. So I understand, like ideally, I know that you guys would love us to be able to also be in that place and space where we could do it all right now. But I also, I really appreciate your willingness to say, like, we're not there yet and we're going to work on fixing our structures and systems so that we can be there to do it the right way. So thank you for that honesty around that piece.
Okay, well, it sounds like, why don't we take the action item? This is an action item. And then, see if there's any more discussion from the board.
For the action item, it says for Amplify CKLA that it should be grades K through five, but I think it should be K through two, right? Okay. I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge Niles, Illinois, approve the adoption of Amplify CKLA, grades K through two, and HMH into literature, grades six through eight, as recommended by the K8 ELA Review Committee at the total cost of $770,000. I can't say numbers anymore.
Second. Okay, Monica, the motion, Rachel had the second. Any other discussion from the board? Let us take a vote.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski? George Akis?
Yes.
Double day yes, Milligan?
Yes.
Once again, thanks for all your work. Rachel said it, really appreciate it. Awesome. Okay, all right, let's move on to A5. It's the approval for our regular education transportation contract. This was also discussed in committee. Adam?
So just going over a few highlights. Because of the law, we had to go out to bid for regular education, I'm sorry, regular education transportation services. We had five companies that were interested, attended the pre-bid meeting. We had four that actually attended the bid opening, one of which just sat there and wrote down numbers, which is very common. But we had three that submitted bids. And when you look at the bid, so, you know, some of the bids were really close, but when you look at the single routes, the paired routes, the interscholastic routes and the kindergarten routes, Safeway came out ahead. So actually, going out to bid was advantageous at this time. We're looking to save approximately $300,000 in this, using this model for regular education. And, you know, very, very satisfied. In addition, I have to say, you know, there's been some, you know, challenges early in the first semester with, you know, with some transportation communication. So, you know, that in addition to some of those pricing, you know, make us feel comfortable in moving forward with Safeway. Did talk to, you know, colleagues in the area that are being serviced by them because they're kind of a new player in the area and seems, you know, really positive results from them, so.
Okay, any questions for Adam? For the committee?
I know that the bus driver recruitment and retention is an issue. And so I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts or understanding of whether Safeway will be comparable or if they'll be better or if you've had any conversations with them?
So, yes, so two answers to that. One, reassurance from the GM of Safeway that they have not had as many of these issues. Number two, you know, those same conversations with colleagues of ours that are using Safeway. So at this point, at this point, things are going well.
Other questions?
Thank you.
All right, why don't we take the motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge Niles, Illinois, approve a three-year contract for regular education transportation services with Safeway Transportation Company for the 2024-25, 2025-26, and the 26-27 school years.
Second. Okay, Monica, the motion, Rachel had the second. Any other discussion from the board? Let us vote.
George Akis?
Yes.
Lubinski? Milligan?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Double day yes.
Okay, similarly, let's go on to A6. And this is where we talk about special education transportation services.
So, yes, so just to clarify, we have two separate contracts, regular education and special education. It just so happens that for, you know, the last number of years, we've had the two contracts with the same company. When we began looking at options, we were looking to extend the special education contract with the current provider, Lakeview. We would only be doing this for a year at a 6% increase financially. You know, that number is good. But in the same way, moving forward, we would look to work with our district people and the company to improve communication with, you know, through the app, through some different tools. So we can, you know, we want, this is a priority, transportation is a priority. We want service to be as good as possible for our parents and our students.
And one we hear about when it's not going well, you know?
Yes.
Okay, other questions? All right, let us take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge Niles, Illinois, approve the fifth amendment to the Special Education Transportation Services contract with Lakeview Bus Lines Incorporated at a 6% increase in the current rates for special transportation.
Second.
Monica, the motion, Gareth had the second. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote.
Lubinski? Kennedy?
Yes.
George Akis?
Yes.
Milligan?
Yes.
Double day yes, Pearl?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you to our committee and for the work there. All right, let's move on to, we did A7 already, we're going to move on to A8. This is the Board of Education meeting dates for the next year.
Yeah, hard to believe, we're talking 2425. I can't say that I'm new anymore at this point. The dates are in draft form right now, just wanted to put them in front of you. We would approve them next meeting. Couple of items of note, the August meeting would be moved up that in case we were in the situation where we'd be approving a referendum, it would meet the deadline for that. And then, I just, as a placeholder, put the ISB board training, oh, I forgot about November. I moved November away from Triple I because remember last year that was up against Thursday night and that was a late meeting and then an early morning for a lot of people trying to get downtown. So we just thought that that would be better to not have both of those things happening in the same week. And then, right now, tentatively, May 1st would be our organizational meeting, which would be after the board election and the certification of results and all of those things. So that meets those deadlines and statutory piece too. Also put in new board member training in case we've got people wanting to get onboarded for there and then they're, oh, wow, yeah. So the rest of it, the rest of it's pretty straightforward, just follows kind of the same calculus. We did move the January meeting back again another week. So that would help with payroll and bills and those types of things when you're coming off of winter break. That was really helpful. So if anybody wants to move anything around or any discussion, you know, we'll definitely take it.
And Ben, thanks for putting the January IASB training like a placeholder in there. When Monica and Ben and I met with our IASB representative this week, we talked about monitoring district performance, which we talked about when we did our training in late July and maybe doing that with the Administration Central Office. So that's kind of where we're going from there. Awesome. All right, so this is not an action item, just a draft form and then the action item next month.
Bring it next month, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we'll move on to A9, which is our personnel report. So Joel, you want to come up and let us know about it? So Joel, you want to come up and let us know about it?
Good evening to everybody. Yeah, we have personnel report in front of you. It's starting to get a little more lengthy. This one and the next couple you should see should be, a lot of our new hires are, will be coming. We're in that process, the thick of it right now where we're just waiting on some things to be finalized. Next one will be even larger. There are a couple, or there is a retirement. We're with Pam Antinucci on this one, who's a longtime foreign language teacher, Lincoln. We're happy for Pam, but sad to see her go, but it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for Joel? All right, let us take the motion.
I moved that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge, Niles, Illinois, approved the personnel report dated April 18, 2024, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Second.
All right, Monica, the motion. Gareth had the second. Further discussion on the personnel report? All right, let us vote.
George Akis.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Milligan.
Yes.
Lubinski.
Yes.
Double day yes. Kennedy.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joel. Thanks for your work. It's a busy time. All right. All right, let's move on to A10, our consent agenda, pretty short consent agenda this month. So why don't we, why don't we take the motion and then go from there?
I moved that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge, Niles, Illinois, approved the consent agenda for April 18, 2024, which includes bills, payroll, and benefits and the approval of financial update for the period ending February 29, 2024.
Second. Okay, Monica, the motion. Rachel had the second. Anything from the board? All right, let's roll call.
Milligan.
Yes.
George Akis.
Yes.
Double day yes. Lubinski.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Okay, A11, a minute from our March meeting. I think everyone was here from that meeting and Monica, oh, yes, Monica wasn't. All right. Any changes, additions, edits to the minutes? Okay, let's, let's take the motion.
I moved that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Bridge, Niles, Illinois, approved the minutes from the regular meeting on March 21, 2024, and the closed meeting on March 21, 2024.
Second.
All right, they're on a roll. Rachel had the, or Monica the motion. Gareth had the second. I, doesn't sound like there's further discussion, so let us vote.
Milligan.
Present.
George Akis.
Yes.
Double day yes.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Lubinski.
Okay, we are down to A12, new business.
I just have one item. It's about the closed minutes that every six months we're supposed to review and decide whether or not we're going to release them. So how it's supposed to happen, I believe, is that I'm supposed to meet with probably you, Matt, go over them, review them twice a year, and then bring like basically a recommendation forward here. So we'll start doing that and just get on maybe when you look back at the board calendar and board agenda, just like so we're always doing them on the same month, maybe months that are more light. I'm not sure what a light month looks like yet, so we'll figure that out. But just to let you guys know that that needs to be happening and we're trying to figure out how to make it work.
And Phyllis, that's a process that you used, correct? Right. Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. And the only other new business, and Monica is going to fill us in on it, but just a reminder that May 2nd, we have our training with IASB. We're doing a board self-evaluation. Do I have the date right? I think, I think it is May 2nd. Gareth was looking, maybe I didn't. So I think it's May, okay. So May 2nd, dinner at 5:30 and then our workshop from 6 to 8 with our Lana from IASB. And so we're doing a self-evaluation and then there's some items we wanted to talk to for how the board works together in our meetings.
I think you said all of it.
Yes, and really just talking about the process and how we work together. So we'll go back to our norms and, yep, so 5:30 dinner, 6 o'clock. And I think that's not going to be in here, it's going to be in the other.
Yeah, we'll be in Plimpton.
Yeah, Plimpton, a little smaller room. Okay. Anything else for new business? Okay. And at this point, the board was asked to go into closed session under 2C1. Wait, wait, hang on, I gotta get my glasses. Too small here. 2C9, which is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors, or specific volunteers of the district. And so is there a motion to go into?
I see two reasons here.
Oh, two reasons.
There's 2C1, which you read.
And then, thank you. All right, so let's start that again. Thank you. The board is going into closed session under two reasons. 2C1, which is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and then under 2C9, which is student disciplinary cases.
So moved.
So is the motion to go into closed? And then we need a second.
Second.
Okay, yeah, so Gareth had the motion and Rachel had the second. Let us roll call to go into closed session.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Double day yes.
Yes.
Lubinski.
So it is 8:27 and the board is going into closed session. Thank you.